Good evening. The December 14, 2017 Longview City Council Meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Ladarian Brown, Associate Minister of Friendship Baptist Church in Longview. Ladarian is also a police officer of the Longview Police Department. Please rise.
Mr. Mayor, Council Members, Mr. Willard, let us pray. Merciful God in heaven, we thank you, we love you, we give you all the praise, the glory, and honor. Thank you so much for this opportunity in which you have afforded every single last one of us to serve the great citizens of Longview. God, as we serve in whatever capacity it is that we are in, we pray that you would continue to lead and guide every single last one of us. God, guide us with not only your sense of direction, but also enable us to lead and guide with your love. God, to what we can love every single last individual that we lead inside this city. Not just one side, but all sides. God, bring unity within our city. Thank you so much for every single first responder in which you have afforded the opportunity to serve this city. Thank you so much, God, for the leadership in which you have rendered unto us. Thank you again, God, for the people in which you've placed on this council, and we pray that you will continue to bless them and lead them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please remain standing for the pledge of the American flag? Our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank Ladarian. I've known Ladarian since he was just a wee little tyke. He and my son grew up together going to school, and my wife always told me, when she'd go to Carpool and see Ladarian and talk to him, that Ladarian was going to be a politician one of these days. And I have a feeling he's going to be taking this seat one of these days. I just have that feeling somewhere. Thank Ladarian, you're a fine young man, you turned out to be, and you have a great representative for our police department as well. Tonight, employee recognition. We're recognizing the City Attorney's Office, which consists of Legal Specialist Laurie, you know I never get this right, Kazameric, close enough, Angel Alvarado, Assistant City Attorney Terry Jackson, Robert Ray, and City Attorney Jim Finley. The City Attorney's Office is one of those departments that works quietly behind the scenes to keep the city running smoothly, but don't be fooled by the fact that this department is not frequently in the limelight. In one way or another, they have a hand in much of what the city does. The Attorney's Office has helped craft innovative approaches in dealing with the homeless when drafting the city's recently enacted panhandling ordinance and assisted in negotiating the drafting agreement like the tax abatement and the lease purchase on tonight's agenda. In addition to ordinances and agreements, the department oversees municipal court prosecutions, answers legal questions from the City Council and City staff, coordinates regionally utility coalitions, assists in compliance with many laws and regulations that apply to the city, and manages litigations. In the middle of all this, the staff supports, the support staff of the City Attorney's Office is flexible enough to help the City Manager's Office, City Secretary's Office, and other departments when the need arises. The overall department of philosophy is to be progressive and preventive while always remaining, retaining common sense and providing legal advice. The final product from the City Attorney's Office involves a total team effort with the application of the highest ethical standards, both personally and professionally. You all, please come forward. Jim is so happy that they're up here doing this tonight. This department, there's really not enough to be said about this group that truly keeps our city in line and out of trouble, because there are a lot of things that we navigate each day that we don't know the course, and we can always call Robert and Terry and Jim and know that this department is going to take care of us and keep us where we need to be. They didn't want this recognition. As a matter of fact, we've told Jim we wanted this, and he said no, so a month ago, when we did his employment agreement evaluation, we said unless you bring your staff forward this week, you're fired. It's that simple. So that's what it took to get this group up here, because they don't want the limelight, but they deserve every bit of it that they can have, because, once again, they take care of us, they keep us where we are and where we need to be, and you guys are always there answering our questions, and even though I don't always agree with you, Jim, because I like doing things a different way, you keep us where we need to be, and I appreciate you, my friend. Thank you so much. All the best. This is a fine group right here. I never thought I'd say that about lawyers. Sorry, Kristin. Tonight, in our community recognition, we're going to recognize a very special person in our community. You all will know who I'm referring to the minute I start talking about what this is about. I'm going to recognize Carmella Davis tonight. I know you thought you were here for your grandfather, for your father, but it's not, it's for you, Carmella. Because here's the thing, Carmella has decorated Longview in her lights for years. This has gone back to days in which she was in college. She decorated in college. She's decorated her house in Spring Hill for the last 12 years, and continued to grow that to be a really showplace of Christmas lights in Longview. And three years ago, she was on ABC's Great Christmas Light Fight, and you know, that was a big thing, huge for Longview, great recognition for our community, but unfortunately, it was a great recognition for her neighborhood as well, and bless their hearts, they've done it for so many years, and Carmella understood the problems it was creating out there, so she and her husband Mark went out and purchased 30 acres of land north of Longview on Highway 259 with better access, ease of getting in and out, and she made it bigger and brighter. There are over 325 lighted deer on display, all the 12 days of Christmas in life size, cancer ribbons this year to commemorate and honor cancer victims and survivors, but she has been herself three times. Pictures of Santa added this year to be enjoyed with the children. It's free of charge, of course donations are accepted, because this is an incredibly expensive endeavor for them to do, and they have never asked for one thing from anybody. Carmella is such a giving person, she gives everything in her life, and Mark, I know you're a workhorse behind this as well, but Carmella is out there doing it herself. She's out there doing it, she doesn't just expect it to be done, she's there, hands-on. There are over 2 million lights out there, 12 miles of electrical line that are buried, 900 electrical outlets. I freak out when one strand of Christmas lights goes out of my house. Can you imagine what they deal with on a daily basis? But what this has really done, this has put Longview as a destination for people to come and see, and you know, let me assure you, when you go down I-20 and go to that, the Christmas lights in and there, it's not voluntary donations, they charge you to go in there, and so you're paying, but here, you can do it for free if you so desire, and if you want to donate, you can, but that's the heart that we have in Carmella Davis. She has really stepped up and really made Longview something special, besides her involvement in Ambux 2, Pink Hill Junior Achievement, all the financial sponsorship she gives over and over to every organization in Longview that asks for something, she's always there. So Carmella, I'm so proud of you and so happy to recognize you tonight in our community recognition. Please come forward. Surprise, I know. That was Mark's problem, not mine. He did that. And I know this is the last thing you want is recognition, because that's not why you do things, you've never done that way, you've never been that way, but it's time someone says thank you, and we all in Longview appreciate what you do, appreciate the time, the effort, the involvement, the generosity and that heart of yours is just so big, and we thank you so much. You make Longview a great place to live. Thank you so much. Hey, Mark, hold on, come back here, Mark. Come here, Mark. Come on, Mark, real quick. I want a picture with you three. Come on, Mark. Don't make me come back there. I'm coming back there. Come on, Carmella. Come on. We're getting a picture, the three of us. Come on. Come on. Come on, right here. Where's our pic, where's my? Where's the guy? Oh, come on, this way. Thank you. I've known Mark, so he was a wee little tyke also. We are now to citizen comment. I only have one comment card, and I'll save that for the zoning item that'll come up in just a few minutes. We're now to a discussion item, discuss the status of the Longview Arboretum and Operating Agreement with the City of Longview and the Longview Arboretum Nature Center Board and Received Directions. Scott Karen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Willard. Congratulations on your last council meeting, and enjoy retirement. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the Longview Arboretum and Nature Center, and I'm going to introduce Ann Hugman to you, and she's going to talk a little bit about the progress that's made on the facility itself, and then we'll talk a little bit about the operating agreement as we move forward. So without further ado, Ms. Hugman.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mayor Mack, and city officials. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight to you. My name is Ann Hugman, and I serve on the board of the Longview Arboretum and Nature Center as the Vice President. Here tonight with me are many members of the board and supporters of the arboretum. Are you going to do that for me? Please raise your hand, I'd like to thank each of you for being here tonight with me. Tonight, I'm here to update you on the development of the project and what our next steps are. We are a working board, and we've achieved our 501(c)(3) nonprofit status and have been actively fundraising ever since 2015. We're extremely pleased to announce to date, we have raised $1.7 million toward our goal. The citizens of Longview, as you all know, are extremely generous, and we are so very grateful for each and every donation. This allows us to begin Phase 1 of the arboretum, and please let me explain with a little history. In 2013, the City of Longview contracted with the Lady Bird Johnson Wildflower Center to develop the master plan of the entire 28-acre tract which you see on the slide before you. We're bounded on the north by Cotton Street, on the east by Grace Creek and the Green, and the south is Highway 31, and on the west is Maud Cobb. The boundaries being, as I said, with the Green, so we have a synergy with the Green, and we're excited that the Green is going to be open next month. Phase 1 of the project will complete approximately 11 acres of the 28, and the big red box, that is the indication of Phase 1, 11 acres, and the smaller red box is the formal gardens, which is approximately 3 acres of the 11-acre Phase 1. Can I go to the next slide? Okay, these are the formal gardens of Phase 1. Again, I said, the formal gardens are a key component of Phase 1 and are approximately 3 acres. Included within the formal gardens, you can see the blue is a babbling brook. It starts at the blind garden pond, it winds through the formal gardens, and ends up at a beautiful pond in the middle of the park. As you cross the brook, there are five bridges and 14 waterfalls. The walking trails are concrete, and they wind up a hill to a pavilion at the top. Also included in Phase 1 is a tranquil pond I spoke about that Judge Stout and the commissioners of Gregg County so graciously and generously built for the project. They also began the clearing of the walking trails for the arboretum and allowed us to utilize the $250,000 grant that we received from Texas Parks and Wildlife. The money is specifically designated for the building of the trails throughout the park. We so appreciate this in-kind workforce from our Gregg County partners. What you see here, next to an integral with the pond, will be a fishing pier and a stage area, allowing for all sorts of concerts, weddings, any kind of venue, party venues, right in the center of the magnificent arboretum, the focal point of the great meadow. Back to the overall plan, in 2015, the board hired landscape architects MHS to design and develop the construction documents for Phase 1. The documents have been submitted to the City of Longview, and they have been approved. Before we release the documents, the drawings to the contractors for bidding, we're working on a memorandum of understanding, or MOU. This MOU will allow all of us to understand what our roles will be in the operations and maintenance of the arboretum. Scott Karen will speak more to this document in just a second. I do want to emphasize that the City of Longview's Parks and Recreation Department and Keep Longview Beautiful are part of and integral to our board from the very beginning, and they are the reason we have so many accomplishments to date. We want to specifically thank Laura Hill, Scott Karen, and Kim Droge for their wealth of information and assistance as we navigate how to best develop this beautiful gift of the arboretum and nature center for the citizens of Longview, Gregg County, and way beyond. Pardon me. This exciting project is truly a partnership between the City of Longview, the Longview Arboretum Board, the county, the state, and of course, our private donors as well. This project was identified in the comprehensive plan as extremely important to the citizens. In fact, 88% of the people voted that parks and green spaces increase the quality of life in our area. Currently, Longview has approximately 7.5 acres of greenland per citizen. It's recommended that we have between 11 and 20, so that means Longview falls a little short, but the Longview Arboretum and Nature Center will add 28 gorgeous acres toward the beautification of our fair city. Arboretums are a proven source of economic development. The Dallas Arboretum has an economic impact on the North Texas region of $170 million in 2013 alone, and that's an incredible number. This arboretum, our arboretum, will bring people and money to our area as well as beauty. It will appeal to people of all ages. So tonight, we humbly ask you not for a vote, but for a nod of approval for us to move forward with this worthwhile project. We ask for your support as we work with our consultants to bring an MOU before you next month. The MOU will give all of us comparable data on what we can expect as far as revenue, attendance, and benchmarking for the arboretum. Once this MOU is in place, we'll be able to bring a contractor onboard with confidence that our Longview Arboretum and Nature Center will be a success from day one. Please remember that this is Phase 1 of maybe two or three phases to complete the arboretum. So our job as a board will be to continue to market and fundraise for the arboretum every year. Our goal is for the arboretum to be much more than net zero. It will bring revenue to the City of Longview. We will be continually involved to ensure that this garden grows and flourishes. And before I turn it over to Scott, I'd like to entertain any questions.
Any question, Ms. Hugman? No, thank you.
I also have a handout. Do you want me to wait and give it to you after Scott speaks, or is it okay?
All right, as Ms. Hugman mentioned, the primary purpose that we're here tonight is to give you guys the outline of the document that we hope to be preparing and then present to you guys for a vote come January. And the reason we wanted to do it in this format was to allow for any discussion points or items that may arise, to hopefully hash those out prior to presenting you with a document that you may not agree with. So we wanted to be able to work through that. As she mentioned, the purpose of the operating agreement is to outline the responsibilities of both the Longview Arboretum and Nature Center as well as the city. And when we talk about the operating agreement itself, what we are looking at is the city will continue to retain ownership of the 28 acres, 29 acres that are out there. They will continue to be dedicated parkland. The city will employ up to five staff people that will not only be employed with their primary responsibility for the arboretum, but they will be used throughout the city as a whole for beautification in those areas of responsibility. The agreement will continue to allow for the park to remain similar to all other parks, so the Parks Department, Public Works, and the rest of the city departments will maintain the current infrastructure furnishings and amenities that are out there, and we will also be providing the utilities as we do in other parks. So what will the Arboretum and Nature Center Board be responsible for, and that is maintaining the gardens themselves and the manicured areas? That's not in our expertise at the current moment, and so we do a great job of maintaining our parks, of cleaning them, and keeping those in good working order, but when it comes to the fine detail of landscaped and manicured beds, that's a little bit beyond. And so that's what the Arboretum Board essentially will be funding, those three maintenance positions, that's primarily will be their responsibility, and the arboretum will fund that and transfer those funds over to the city to be able to do that. They will also be responsible for all the landscape maintenance, so any of the materials that they want to change out for seasonal plantings, if they want to have a new garden, those kind of things, then the arboretum itself will be responsible for the materials thereof. The arboretum will also be responsible for scheduling and programming events and activities at the facility, and then will retain revenue from those rentals concessions beyond the direct costs. Again, if our staff is responsible for setting up an event or tearing it down, then those costs will be covered as part of that rental agreement, but the revenue above and beyond that will be retained by the arboretum itself. Lastly, it's kind of important to note that there is not a whole lot of parking at the arboretum. In fact, there's none on the 29 acres that is out there, so there'll be joint use of the Maud Cobb parking lot, and so again, part of the responsibility will be to coordinate different events and activities that take place, so as not to overload that parking lot. The nature center, Arboretum and Nature Center will be required to report to us financially every year where they are, and then of course, the initial term will be five years, and there will be an agreement as to written changes throughout that entire first year, five-year period. So moving forward, what we are looking to do is have an agreement before you on the January 11 meeting. Construction would then begin in the spring, and then the arboretum would open at some point in fiscal year 2019. You're looking at somewhere between a nine- and 12-month construction schedule, so if construction begins in the spring, we would anticipate opening no later than the spring of 2019, but depends on the weather as all construction projects do. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if there's anything, any item in here which you feel is or isn't appropriate, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them, or I'm sure Ms. Hugman would as well.
Any question, Mr. Karen? Ms. Williams?
Thank you for your presentation. The city retains ownership of the 28 acres, five staff. I saw where the arboretum committee would be willing to pay for three. Are we talking about two different entities for a total of eight there? No, the arboretum committee would fund three of the five.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other two would be on the city. My next question is, is that going to be, are we using staff that we currently have, or are we creating additional positions?
These would be five new positions.
Do we have projections on that outside of the MOU, because we should probably kind of have a general idea based on what we're currently paying for our parks and rec?
Yes, ma'am.
So do we know how much that's going to cost us on an annual basis?
Yes, ma'am. On salary and benefits alone for those five positions, we anticipate that total cost to be somewhere around $250,000 to $300,000.
These full-time positions?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's for total? So for the two that we would be responsible for then, I guess I just need to divide that by five?
Yes, ma'am. It'd be somewhere in that $100,000 to $150,000 range.
And then I saw on another slide, the arboretum will retain the funds, I'm guessing from like events like weddings and things of that nature?
Yes, ma'am.
None of that comes back to the City of Longview, or what are we, I guess, what's our rate of return on that?
Sure, no, it's an excellent question.
Because I know that arboretums generate a lot of revenue. I've been to the one and all, so I know what you're talking about. So what is the expectation of what we're going to generate?
So part of the work that ETM, which is our arboretum consultant, is doing is working on that benchmarking and those projections as far as revenue and expenses are concerned. And so the revenue would be retained by the arboretum, but again, since they're funding those positions, I would assume that
They would go toward that.
...come back to the city for those functions. As she also mentioned, they are going to be continually fundraising for Phases 2 and possibly 3, depending on how things go along. So those funds will, again, even though they're turned over to the arboretum,
They're going to go back into the park.
They're essentially staying within the park itself.
Got it, okay.
The goal would be that everything that we did retain goes directly back into the arboretum.
Okay, that was kind of what I was thinking, I just kind of wanted to make sure I understood that, okay.
Ma'am, I'm Bob Messler, President of the Arboretum Board.
Hey, Bob.
Scott mentioned earlier in his presentation that those additional employees that the city is going to add won't be 100% in the arboretum. They'll be doing other jobs throughout the city.
Right, right. And the reason I ask, thank you for that, Bob, the reason I ask is because a lot of times, we have numerous parks that require a lot of attention.
Sure.
And so I just want to make sure we're not
Right.
...doing something new and changing the focus, and we're focusing on the whole picture, so, okay.
In our meetings with Rollin, he mentioned that they're always behind.
Yes.
They need additional people in that department anyway, so.
Mr. Wright?
Mr. Karen, what other costs do you project that will be involved besides just the employees?
Right, so certainly there'll be the employees, there'll also be the plant materials, again, those costs are covered through the arboretum and nature center, but then also there'll be equipment, and depending on what type of equipment is needed and how it is directly utilized, those costs will have to be distributed between the nature center as well as the city. So there will be some additional costs there, as far as the maintenance costs are concerned, again, because there's a tremendous amount of infrastructure that is in place, and that's where we talk about in the agreement itself as to who is responsible for the entire cost of all of that. Again, some of the items, excuse me, the vast majority of the items that are in the arboretum itself and the 29 acres are in the ground, so they are the plantings and those kind of things, and so we don't anticipate a tremendous amount of cost in the infrastructure itself, although we do know that pipes break and things are vandalized, and so those costs will incur. Again, part of the responsibility of ETM, our consultant, is to identify what those costs are and to make projections over the next couple of years so that we truly do understand what that total cost is beyond the personnel costs, as you mentioned.
We have a report before January 11th? Do we have that report?
Yes, sir. I spoke with ETM today just to make sure that that was possible. They wanted us to have this meeting, get some feedback from you, and then they felt like they would be able to get a report to you at least a week ahead of time, so that would be right after the first of the year, so that you would be able to read through it, because it is quite thick, we've seen a draft, and they want you to be able to read through it, ask questions, you know, and they want to be prepared to answer your questions. So that's the goal, is that you will have that document prior to the 11th.
Well, you know, I think everybody I've spoken to on the board, I think I've said, my big concern is, can the city afford to do this? And ever since I've been on the council the last three years, our budget, I think, if you look at the city's budget, it's been pretty flat. We've had to add a lot of money for the animal shelter, so other things have been cut, so we're going to need additional funds, so hopefully we can figure out a way from the consultant to generate those funds then.
Agreed, and as I said, our role as a board is to always be in fundraising mode. I mean, that is something that's going to have to be ongoing, and we know that. To make an arboretum successful, you have to replan at least four times a year. Otherwise, people won't come back, and so to do that, we have to raise the funds. We realize that.
So is the building, the old lumberyard? Is that going to be?
That is not in Phase 1, sir.
Okay.
It is anticipated to come onboard in Phase 2 or 3.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So the entrance to the arboretum itself is still going to be off of Maud Cobb?
It would be in the Phase 1, yes.
Okay. The plans and specs for Phase 1 are ready to roll out.
They are.
Yes, sir.
And of the five people, the city would have the supervisor, the horticulturist, and one of the three maintenance workers, and the arboretum board, the other two, or is it the other way around?
At this point, the way that we have discussed it is, the city would cover the cost of the supervisor and the horticulturist, and then the three maintenance positions would be the responsibility of the arboretum itself. That way, again, that's the direct care of the facility, again, which we believe is at a higher level than what we see at most of our parks, and again, so these staff would be, again, not dedicated to the facility, because there are other needs amongst the city for those types of expertise, but they would be able to do that specifically, so.
Anyone else? Two questions, not concerns, just questions or points of interest. Scott, do we have any other, none of our other parks that we currently own or operate, do we let funds go anywhere else, do we? Other than concessions partly at that Lear Park for, we split concessions with the girls' softball and with the boys' baseball and the soccer? But no one else gets to take the revenues with them that I'm aware of? Is that true or not true?
Well, when we host a tournament, the direct costs are covered by the tournament director themselves. director themselves.
And they're able to-
But the entry fees and everything that they charge the teams are attained by the tournament directors.
So that fits in with what we're talking about right here. So we're not setting new precedents, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to.
Right, no, I, I understand and I appreciate that.
Okay, I just want to make sure no one's going to come back and say, why are y'all treating the Arboretum different than you're treating everybody else? Because I don't want, we need to maintain precedence, which is good. You answered the question very well. Because that's the way I look at it. I mean, and you all are going to be in constant fundraising mode. We, that's, that's, we understand that. But we have to make sure, and we won't know a lot of these answers until we see the agreement or the consultant's report. And, and it does concern me a little bit that we're not going to have that, but maybe a week ahead of time because that's going to be a lot of information to look at in a week. And then to try to adopt an agreement on the 11th, I, I don't know if that's going to happen. It may, it may be very self-explanatory and we may not have many questions, but I have a feeling there'll be, that's going to be a very fluid situation. So we're going to have some, some input, some requests, some concerns that, you know, we'll, we'll work through that. But we just have to make sure that we understand that, you know, until we see the entire project, I mean, certainly we all want to see this, this be successful. As I've told so many people who said, you know, things about Arboretum or this, I say, you know, it's not for everybody, but it's for somebody. And then that's all we're looking for is to make Longview a better place, to make it more habitable for those who live here, those who want to come here and visit us. You know, Lear Park's not for everybody either, but it's for somebody. And, and it works and it, it brings people here and it's, it's a venue that we can be proud of. And this will be the exact same thing. This is a gorgeous layout that y'all have done. Everything is first class and that's what we want it to be in Longview. But we just need to be careful as we move forward that we, we dot all of our i's and cross our t's because we don't want to be left in a short position where we're all trying to scramble. Because your fundraising will be very important, but y'all will use your fundraising to do the things that you all need to do to replant. You're not going to use that fundraising for things that the city's going to be responsible for. We're going to have to come up with those funds. And, and that's where creative budgeting comes in place and that's where Mr. Bonds will get his first dip into this city manager's realm and shake the magic wand like Mr. Willard's done for so many, for three years at least that I've been here. So I think this is going to be very exciting and, and very encouraging for our community. We just have to take it one step at a time. And, and I hope no one on the board thinks that any of us are resistant to the Arboretum because we're not. We're cautiously optimistic like we are in a lot of projects because we have to answer to all the citizens, those that both like it and those that don't like things, you know. So understand our position, but we're all cautiously optimistic this is going to be a fantastic venue for our community. So we appreciate the presentation, look forward to next month, look forward to getting the information that we can then look over, digest and come up with some really good concepts for all of us to, to move forward on.
And Mayor, if you feel that it's too quick on the 11th, you know, you only have one meeting in January, so we really were planning on the 25th. If you feel it's too quick and we get the information and we can certainly move to the first meeting in February. So, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to push anything.
No, no, and I appreciate that. And we may, we may still have two meetings in January, they just may be back-to-back, you know, one week after the other. So we haven't determined that completely yet, so.
We were more comfortable with the 25th, quite honestly.
Yes, I understand, absolutely.
And I think that, you know, I applaud the Arboretum Board as, as we've gone throughout this. And, and as I've tried to stress to them and they've accepted is that, you know, we're in this together and so we have to, to look at what's in the best interest of the city and the citizens of Longview as a whole. And certainly the hearts and minds of the Arboretum Board are solely focused on that and as well they should be, and they've done a tremendous job of that. Part of my role is, is to look out for everybody, including those on the Arboretum that support it. And so knowing and understanding the, the financial ramifications of everything that we're dealing with, we, we take a very cautious approach to this. And again, it's some of the reason that we've, we've delayed things that we have to this point. So I appreciate those comments. And as we move forward, we certainly want to continue to do our due diligence to make sure that, that everybody is supportive of moving forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And, and, and also be aware, citizens of Longview, we've been operating the last, really, three years with negative revenues. I mean, we have been with, with sales tax that have been just bottomed out. But we have really made a huge rebound over the last number of months. And we're not counting our chickens before they hatch, but if those revenues continue in the upward trend that they have been, those are monies that we haven't counted on. And those, because we, we budgeted flat. I mean, Mr. Willard and his team budgeted as conservative as we can budget because that's what we have to do is be conservative and I applaud him for that and I know Mr. Bonds with the same thing. But with the revenues the way they are, we, we, if it continues, we're going to be in a positive that we haven't been in, in the last three years that I've been here. And so those are pluses from our standpoint. So those are all things that we can hope for in the future. So, Mr. Willard, please.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to say that Keith and I and Scott and Laura and many others, we've been working real closely with the board for quite a while now. And it's, they've been the utmost professionals and it is a city park, the land is. And when, from the city staff perspective, we really feel a partnership and responsibility in that too. And, and I know they do and we want to make it, when it happens, the best that we can make it and make sure we maintain it, you know, for the long term. But I think Keith would agree with me that these people are passionate and hardworking and they put their money up where their passion is and I just applaud them for all that and it'll be a beautiful thing one day.
Without question. And I, I as well echo that. You know, we do have, when you look at who's in the audience and who supports this, it's the heart and soul of our community, the people that have put their money where their mouth is. And that's, if you're not willing to do that, nothing will ever be successful. So you all have done what you're, what you're doing in the right way and we appreciate that. And I look forward to an amazing outcome when this is all said and done.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Now to something really exciting, public safety update. Chief Bishop.
We need to drag that music.
Right, yeah. Jack Webb.
Just the facts, man.
Mayor, may I, council members, Mr. Willard? Last month, we received some good news based on our efforts from National Night Out. We were notified by the National Association of Town Hall that Longview ranked 11th out of 112 cities that participated in National Night Out. Those cities with a population of 100,000 to 300,000. And as you can see, we moved up from number 14 last year to number 11. So once again, thank you everybody that supported this National Night Out and we're going to continue to move forward into next year and hopefully we can get that 11th ranking up to number one. Last week, we had the opportunity to select two officers that were going to make up our Police Outreach Services Team. I know I, I talked to you a couple of months ago about the homeless outreach team and some of the duties and responsibilities that they would have. We did have a selection process and Officer Ron Duncan and Officer Alan Whitlock were selected to fill those roles. I gave you a brief idea of how that, how that they would be organized. And they will be attached to the police area representative group of officers. And they're going to be housed at the train depot out of the B40 office where they can be out there in the, in the community along with the par officers. So they'll assume their duties after the first of January. After the first of the year, we'll look at a couple of cities that have similar programs and send the officers to those cities and, and look at the shadow of the officers that work there and kind of see what ideas they can get that they might be able to bring back that, that we can use here. So we're looking forward to getting that, that team in service. Also last month, we had the opportunity to go head-to-head with the fire department again in the Doors Bowl it Forward fundraiser. I will say they put up a good fight in game one. They had the lead going into game two, but as you can see there by the scores, we, we overcame the deficit and walked away again. I think for the third year in a row, is that right, Chief? So I want to thank Doors and the fire department. That's a good time to get together and, and do some bowling. Also, I'd like to remind everybody that we have our, our teen police academy coming up. That'll be starting on Monday, starting January 22nd. Anyone interested in participating in that can contact Officer Roger Askew at 903-235-2170. If you remember, we started this teen academy last year. We ran two sessions of it. It proved to be very successful, so we want to, want to have another full class of teens to educate them more about the police department. And as you council members know, we also have our regular citizens' police academy that we do and our Spanish academy that we do as well. Back a few months ago, one Assistant Chief Boone and I were talking and we decided to expand our, our citizens' police academy out a little bit further to our business community to find ways that we can educate the business community on what services that we can have to, to support them. So we have a business academy that's, that we've set up. It's going to begin January 17th. They're going to meet the third Wednesday of each month from 11 to 1 during lunchtime. And it'll go for 11 months and it'll be for business owners and managers to come in and let us educate the business community on what services we have that, that could benefit them. We selected some individuals already. We have 26 participants from 18 different companies that are going to come and you can see a couple of the businesses there that are going to participate in our inaugural academy. So we're looking forward to this, this next phase of our, our police academy as well. Also last month, I talked to you about church safety seminar that we'd be having coming after the first of the year. We have that scheduled. That will occur on Thursday, January 18th from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Grace Creek Church is going to, is going to host us, be sponsored by Longview Police Department, Longview Police Chaplains Association and Grace Creek Church. We do ask for a pre-registration and those that are interested can talk, contact Officer Christie-Bryan at 903-808-3388. Some of the topics that are going to be covered in the seminar are church safety awareness, the seven lines of defense, how to combat an active shooter, eyes and ears teams for the congregations, and then how to handle disruptive individuals and suspicious behavior that may be occurring in and around church facilities. So anyone interested, we just asked for that pre-registration and we'll be pushing out more information through our social media and website. And also, I know the other night, we got to formally recognize City Manager David Willard and his retirement, but I feel I'd be remiss at his last meeting if we once again didn't wish him best wishes. And I thank you again for everything that you've done for not only the employees of the police department, but the employees of the whole city. And we want you to know that you're going to be missed. And with that, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions, Chief? Ms. Williams?
Yeah, first of all, thank you. I'm happy to know that the Police Outreach Services Team will be housed at the depot in District 3. So thank you for that. I really like the way that the police academy is expanding to the business community and the keeping your church safe. My question about that, I know we push things out on social media, but will there be individual letters going to some of the churches that may not otherwise know? Because I'm finding more often than not, most people don't subscribe to like the Longview News Journal. And a lot of our target audience, the elders in the different churches, they may not necessarily be on social media. So are we pushing that through letters and things of that nature?
Yeah, we have some, we have a three-fold flyer that we're going to mail out to the churches-
Very good.
-for them to post through their congregations.
Great, great. And what about the business part? Are you just, I know this is the inaugural and I'm, just keep us posted on that because I think that that's something that each council member, we can push within our respective districts, businesses that may be affected by, I know I've experienced that by crime and not knowing what to do. So, great job. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, before you go, I just want to say thank you to your department. I know we're not to the end of the year yet, this is our last meeting, but you know, your, your department has stepped up and, and kept Longview safe this year. You know, we're way down on our homicides this year and who knows what will happen between now and the end of the year. But to this point, y'all have done a fantastic job of keeping Longview safe and, and being out there with us and taking care of us and handling your, your jobs as we expect you to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Chief Stealman.
Mayor, may I, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you since our last meeting in November. I do have quite a few topics. We've been extremely busy for the last month and I'll try and go through these as quickly as I can. First and foremost, to start off on a serious note, I would like to encourage, encourage everyone in our community to be extremely safe this time of year. We're already seeing an uptick in our number of structure fires. A lot of it is going to be due to space heaters and things too close to them. So just please use extreme caution during this time of year. We certainly, certainly don't want a festive season ruined by someone losing all their possessions in a structure fire. We give a shout out to Battalion Chief Roger Groves. Roger served the city for 28 years and he started his last shift back on December the 1st. We wish him best of luck in his retirement and his new endeavors. We've talked about this one previously, the Rally the Red event that was held by Lewis Morgan Drug back in, I think at the end of October. They raised enough money to buy 55 ballistic vests to outfit the fire department with. They were kind enough to present those funds to me yesterday. These, these folks were great partners to work with and it's another great example of our community members stepping forward and fulfilling a need. Doors Bowle-thon, we've already talked about that, so we'll just keep going. We had a great time. We, we have a great time with this Bowle-thon every year. Congratulations to the police department. They, they do excel at bowling. Proud of them, proud for them. We had a great time there. We had the opportunity this year, back in November, to do something that was kind of unique. Several of our personnel, our, our medical staff volunteered to participate in a Combat Warriors Hunting Weekend that was held up at the Satterwhite Ranch just north of town. And they were there to provide a medical contingent for these severely wounded veterans that have served our country so, so valiantly so that they could go out and enjoy a weekend of camaraderie and hunting and just some good old East Texas, you know, typical hunting season type fun. So I want to give a shout out, and I realize I just had three of the guys up there, but there were, I think there were probably 10 to 12 that volunteered their time to go up and serve a shift to work during this hunting event. It was just, and every one of them came back touched from the experience and I'm certainly, certainly proud of them for stepping up and doing that. Our annual toy drive was held recently back at the beginning of the month. Again, I got to give a quick shout out to Captain Daniels and primarily the Station 6 crew on A shift, but the whole fire department jumps in behind this. And through this, we're able to get toys in the hands of kids that would probably otherwise do without. So we're certainly, again, thanks to the community for stepping up and supporting us with this. Recently, at the, the chamber did a recognition ceremony, I've, I've mentioned this one briefly too, where one of our employees, Aisha Robinson, our public education specialist, was recognized as an emerging leader. Just finally had a good picture to show and thanks for the support and she's, she represents our department very well and we're certainly proud of her. We recently had three of our newer employees graduate from the Kew沟 College Fire Academy Class 102 and we now have them on board and looking to get them into the pipeline of being productive members of our, of our department. Very exciting time. You know, I, I remember what it was like my first day on the job and I'm, I'm a little bit envious of them that they're getting to experience that and, you know, learning some new things. So we're certainly proud to have these guys on board to help make us better. And just today, we had three members of our, of our mid-management level staff complete the, the supervisors network that's done by our human resource department. So Lieutenant Nicholson, Chief Jones and Captain Gothard there all participated in that year-long program and completed with honors and we're certainly proud of them. Again, this is the stuff that makes our, our department better because these people are willing to step outside of their box and learn new things. We had the opportunity a few weeks ago here in this council chambers to hear a presentation from members of Ms. Sawyer's class at the East Texas Charter School. And their topic that they researched, and they spent an extreme amount of time researching emergency management. And that, that just fires me up. I mean, they came in here and they gave a textbook lecture of all the different phases and the breakdown of emergency management. They had done their research, they asked some fabulous questions of both Chief Bishop and I. and I, and it was just so encouraging to see them grab a hold of a topic like that. And it can be kind of dry, but with all the natural disasters and the things that we've experienced this year, they were really engaged into it, and it was very exciting, and we certainly enjoyed our time with them here on that day. And just today, I had the opportunity to speak to the Leadership Longview class up in the ELC. This has become part of that program where they get to the behind-the-scenes look of the things that they don't see. It's real easy to see the fire trucks going up and down the road and the police cars out doing their business, but they don't get to see that coordination piece that sometimes happens in the emergency management, or the Emergency Operations Center that supports that stuff behind the scenes. This is another great group. They asked some fabulous questions. We have a promotional ceremony that's coming up next week on Thursday. It'll be held at our training center from 2:00 to 3:00. This is the official recognition and promotion of Doug Skinner from captain to battalion chief, Ross Dyer from lieutenant to captain, and Corey Clanton from lieutenant to captain. This is open to the public. We hope that you can enjoy, join us for that. I'm sorry. You might have read in the paper today, we had a little wager over the last Saturday's football game with Longview and Lufkin. I got to be honest with you, I was really sweating that one about the last two minutes of the game. My staff was blowing my, I was at the game, my staff was blowing my phone up. We were thinking we were going to have to get ready to make a trip down south, but true Lobo fashion, they hung in there, they dug in, and they got the job done, and we're certainly proud of them. And I want to applaud Chief Lovett and the members of his administrative staff from the Lufkin Fire Department. They made good on the bet. They gritted their teeth, they came up yesterday, they did the work. We had a great time with them. It was just fun. I don't know that I'd do that one again, though. That was a little bit nerve-wracking. But they were great sports about it, and we appreciate them taking the challenge. Code Red, free service, I'm going to keep mentioning this one until we get more people signed up. Please understand and know that we have many levels of our emergency warning capabilities. This is just one facet of it. Free service, check out the website and get yourself registered. EMS subscription, this is the last time you'll have to hear this one for the year. Time is running out. If you want to take advantage of this opportunity to save yourself some money, if you need an ambulance transport here in town, this program closes down on December 31st, accepting people enrolling for the following year for 2018. And just like Chief Bishop, I want to wish Mr. Willard a very happy and enjoyable retirement. It's been quite a ride. I appreciate the opportunity that you've given me in the fire department and the support that you provided for the fire department for your entire time here, and we wish you the best of luck in that.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Chief Steelman? Chief, I also wanted to say to you, Chief Willard, that, well, thank your department. You all kept us safe as well again this year, you kept our residents safe, and this is going to be y'all's busy time. This is when y'all get really busy with these, with the fires and the structural damage that can occur, but thank you for your guidance, leadership for our firemen and the police, the people that take care of us, and we thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Willard? Chief Steelman pointed out to me real quickly that the ambulance subscription service, that it was Medicare-eligible. So if I needed to sign up, so I-
Perfect. Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all. We're now at a consent agenda. Any items that would like to be pulled off for separate discussion? I have one note of interest on this, just to clarification. On item H, the board members, I wanted everybody to understand why the voting member is being replaced, because when Ray Wade signed up to run for city council for your spot, Kasia, I asked Ray if he was going to run, and I thought it was only appropriate that he resigned as a voting member of Leadco, simply because I didn't want there to be a conflict between Leadco and our council. I don't want anyone to think that there's anything going on there that would sway a vote or change a decision. So Ray was gracious, and he understood, and Ray's in the audience tonight. I want to thank you for your service to Leadco, Ray. You are so important, and so many things that Leadco's done in the last two and a half years. Your council's been very appreciative, and we wish you the best of luck, but that's just why Ray resigned, and I admire you for that. And so, we're moving John Martin up to take Ray's voting position on Leadco boards, so we'll have a full voting member, just so you all understand why we do that. Okay?
Mr. Duffer? Second.
Any, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now zoning. We have a public hearing to discuss application PD-17-06.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting to amend PD-8 in order to revise the original site plan to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through window. Currently, there is a restaurant with a drive-through window there, a Taco Bell KFC. The applicant wishes to demolish the building in order to build a brand-new building and build it closer to Judson Road. Now, there are deed restrictions on the property that limit the height of the building on the front part of the property, and so in order, hopefully, the property owner will receive this waiver from the adjacent property owners. If not, the property owner will build the KFC back, or the Taco Bell, back at the original location. This portion of Judson Road is a text roadway, which is appropriate for this type of use. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions to Ms. Choi? I do have one speaker card, Michael Stanbury. This does require a public hearing, so the public hearing is now open.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Mike Stansbury. My address is 101 East Cherokee Street in Jacksonville, Texas. My job title is Director of Development and General Counsel for Southern Multifoods. Southern Multifoods is a Taco Bell franchisee that is a family-owned company that's been around for about 40 years. We currently have 95 restaurants, all located in Texas. We've got about 35 in East Texas, about 35 in the Metroplex, and about 25 down in Corpus Christi in the Rio Grande Valley. Specifically here in Longview, we do have the restaurants here. We just completed the scrape and rebuild on High Street, as well as the one out on Estes Parkway. With regard to this specific location, this is, as everybody on the council probably knows, is a Taco Bell KFC combination unit. With a franchise restaurant like this, we get a 20-year franchise agreement. This restaurant was built in, if I recall, 98, 99. Our franchise agreements are coming up upon their expiration. Our strategy as a company is to get out of the KFC business, which is what we did at Estes Parkway, what we intend to do here, what we intend to do in Gilmer, what we intend to do in White Oak, and some other locations that we have. So as Angela stated, what our intent is, is we would like to move our building up. This building will look almost identical to the one on Estes Parkway. It'll be a little bigger. We call it a 50, it's for some reason, but it has 52 interior seats. It will also have a patio with 12 seats outside. Angela alluded to a deed restriction. I want to be transparent, there is a deed restriction. I'm getting some additional help from an attorney in Dallas on the interpretation of that deed restriction, because it is ambiguous as to which adjoining properties it may or may not affect. And so, when I first looked at the deed restriction, I felt like it may affect four different tracts of land. I'm not so sure at this point that it affects all four. It may just affect a couple in the back, but again, I'm getting some clarification on exactly which tracts of land it affects, so that I can go to those property owners, approach them for their consent to move the building up toward Judson Road. So what we're here to request tonight is kind of twofold. One is option A, which is our preferred, which is the site plan moving the building on the bottom, as Angela alluded to, toward Judson Road. Option B, that we're asking for approval, which P&amp;Z approved, would be to just demolish where the existing building is and to go back in that same location.
Any questions to Mr. Stanbury? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. A public hearing to consider request filed by Michael McDonald to abandon a portion of rare but width alley right-of-way, lots 1 through 16, Block A Henderson Heights subdivision. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to abandon a section of unimproved alleyway between lots 1 through 16, Block A Henderson Heights, which is located south of Wilson Street and north of Highway 80. This part of right-of-way was never built upon, it was never paved, so it's pretty, it's dirt right now, dirt and grass. All public utilities have signed off on this, along with staff. There is no public infrastructure located in this alleyway. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions to Ms. Choi?
Yes. Who are we abandoning it to?
We will abandon it to the adjacent property owners. So this alleyway will be split in half, and each joining property owner will receive half.
Okay.
Now, there are several property owners in this request.
Okay, and they've all been notified, and they've all signed on in the public utilities?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move, approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing to consider a request filed by Leadco to abandon a portion of 80-foot wide street right-of-way known as Greystone Road. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. This will be the first of two public hearings to abandon Greystone Road along with Lou Galacy, Lou Galacy Road. This is part of the Dollar General development. They are requesting, Leadco is requesting abandonment of an 80-foot right-of-way of Lou Galacy Way along with Greystone. All public utilities, public and private utilities, have signed off on this request along with staff. All the utilities will be relocated. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next one is another abandonment by Leadco of the Lou Galacy Way. Ms. Choi?
Yes, sir. So this is the 80-foot right-of-way for Lou Galacy Way. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Public hearing is now open. Any questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was there a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Action item, consider an ordinance is designated to specify continuous geographic area consisting approximately 110 acres in Longview North Business Park. The city of Longview has reinvestment zone for purpose of tax abatement pursuant to Chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code. Mr. Mansfield?
Yes, sir. Good evening to everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be before y'all. If you remember back in October, I was before y'all presenting the 380 agreement for the Dollar General project, or Project Bald Eagle, as it was referred to. This is the next step in the process to get this project finally wrapped up, the tax abatement agreement. If y'all remember in the presentation that I gave, this part of the incentive package is the establishment of the tax abatement agreement, and I believe by Texas state law, this reinvestment zone has to be created first.
Any questions of, it does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions to Mr. Mansfield?
Is this all of this now? Do we keep having to keep looking at this?
No, sir. I think the next item after this should be-
Well, I mean, tonight.
...the final thing, and then we still have some steps we have to go through with the county as well.
The county has to do theirs.
Yeah. We're anticipating that next week.
Monday of next week, yeah.
But the city, we've met all our obligations-
Yes, this is it.
-at this point, okay.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, motion carries. Any, no, motion carries. It's ridiculous. Okay, now, consider resolution authorizing the tax abatement with Dollar General in the North Longview Business Park. Mr. Mansfield?
This is the next step in it. This is actually approving the last step for the city, actually approving the abatement, the abatement's for 10 years over the real and personal property.
This requires a public, this doesn't require a public hearing, does it? So this is just a, is there any questions to Mr. Mansfield?
No, to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mansfield, I want to thank you for your service on this, the diligent work that Leadco has done. I see Diana's in the room back there. We know y'all have put hours and hours and hours of time into this, but this is, once again, one of the, this is one of the biggest things we've had in Longview in recent memory, and, you know, y'all continue to strive forward, bringing jobs to this community, helping our economic growth, our development, which is what you're all about, and we appreciate your time, your effort, your support, and I know that we're here to support you as well.
And I really appreciate that, too. The nature of economic development these days, we have to be creative, we have to be aggressive. There are other communities competing for these projects, and y'all's willingness to explore this certainly makes our job easier, too. And I do want to thank our staff in the office, and also the board, and Ray's service on the board, it's been phenomenal. It was appropriate that y'all honored the city attorney, because I can't begin to tell you how much help that Robert has been specifically on this project going forward. And then also, too, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Willard, and I apologize, I was not at the event the other night, I was actually out of town, but, you know, a year and a half ago, I came here to interview for this position, and I was honored to be given a tour by David, and I think Keith was included, and I could really tell, just from his, the many questions I asked, probably some of them not appropriate, we won't go into that discussion, but just the knowledge that he gave and excitement of what he explained, and it really made me appreciate what I was coming into, and also his guidance and his friendship, most importantly. Door's always open at Leadco for you, David. Thank you very much.
Wayne, one thing before you leave. I just wanted to comment to you, to relay this to you and your staff and the Leadco board. When I met with Governor Abbott last week, and the very first thing the governor said to me was, "Congratulations on your economic development landing of the Dollar General Distribution Center."
Thank you.
He knew that without even discussing it with him, and so, you know, that has reverberated throughout the state and hopefully through all these big manufacturers that are looking to move or relocate or somewhere. You all have put us on the map in a way we haven't been on the map in a long time, so congratulations to y'all, and just know that even the governor knows what's going on in Longview, so that's good.
Thank you. We'll have some more, hopefully, coming soon.
I have no doubt. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year, and we are coming to a close for 2017, a very successful 2017, and I would like to take the opportunity to thank all of our city employees and my colleagues on council for helping to make Longview, Texas, a fantastic place to live and work. David, I've known you and worked with you for the whole 10 and a half years you've been here. I consider you a very close friend. It has been said often, but it can't be repeated often enough. I want to thank you for everything you have done for this community. You will be missed.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Ms. Noddy?
I'd like to echo those sentiments, David. It's been an honor. Thank you so much for your guidance.
Ms. Williams?
Good evening, everyone. First, I have a picture. I was at Pine Tree ISD Birch Elementary. It was so much fun. I can't remember the name of the book that I read, but it had something to do with a mouse going to the movies. So it was fantastic. It was a Christmas book, and we just really had a great time. And also, Chief, there we are. Chief chauffeured myself, councilmembers Noddy, and Councilman Ed Moore in the parade. Now, we took a picture together, but they came out dark. I'm just saying. So that's the one I opted to show, where I look a little afraid, but Chief's a great driver.
Whoa, 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 whoa. You wrote, "I had to walk in that parade."
Hold on, man. Hold on, man. I heard you were riding a bike.
Well, I walked. That is, some is not right about this whole situation.
You dress like a grandchild, I would have no doubt.
That's right, that's right. That's right, that's right. Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying. But, okay, and last but not least, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Take the time and enjoy your families this year. I want to wish the Lobos a win. I'll be in the game again on Saturday, and, you know, I pray for their success. It's time for us to win state again. Mr. Willard, all I can say to you is this: You know I love you. You know we're friends, even when we disagree. That's the key to a sustaining friendship. You should be able to disagree sometimes, but at the end of the day, when you see each other the next time, you should still be friends. I'll leave you with that. I'll leave you with peace. I'll leave you with God. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Ms. Sichahara?
I don't have any announcements, just to say that, David, I love you, and we're gonna miss you a lot.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Wright?
This past Sunday, at, my Rotary Club sponsored Danny Goki and Natalie Grant, and I want to thank everybody who came out to the Belcher Center and supported us. We gave away about $60,000, I believe, to some of the, to five different organizations in town. So I want to thank everybody who came out and supported us, and the organizations and the companies in town that supported us. Seems like it's the same companies over and over again, and we really appreciate all they do for Longview. And David, it's been a great few years working with you. You were in the Rotary Club, and I knew you from that, but getting to know you here has been just fantastic, and I appreciate everything you've done for this city.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonds has big shoes to fill, I can promise you.
Mr. Purtle?
Mr. Willard, I just want to tell you thanks for covering my backside a lot of times here.[1063.23][1063.23](laughter) And Keith, that definitely has his work cut out for me. But I really have learned a lot from you, and I really enjoy your temperament and how calm and everything you keep everybody around here, so we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Mr. Willard?
Well, I'm not gonna say a lot. I just want to thank, the party the other night was just, the retirement party that y'all provided for me was just beyond my wildest dreams for Cindy and I, and our son Zane and his wife got to come up and be part of it. Our daughter couldn't make it, but it was just perfect. I don't know how else to say that, and I really appreciate it, all the people that came out, you know, people are so busy this time of year, and, and for them to take time, and for you all to take time to come, I just means the world to me. I want to especially thank Laura Hill and Dietrich Johnson, and Sean Hera, and Angie Shepherd for planning that, and all the ladies that, that served the, were just special. So thank you, thank each one of you for the privilege that you've given me to be here, and I will sign a speaker card when I come next time.[1138.92][1138.92](laughter) Anyway, yeah. Merry Christmas to everyone, to all of you and your families, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Longview City Office will be closed Friday, December 22nd, and Monday, December 26th, and Monday, January the 1st, in the reference of holidays. Due to the Christmas holidays, normal trash and recycling collection will shift one day. Also, no yard waste will be picked up the week of Christmas. The week of New Year's, your trash and recycling will shift one day forward as well. Longview Transit and R&amp;K Distributors are offering a free and safe ride home December 31st from 8:00 PM to 3:00 AM. Please call 903-753-2287 for a safe ride. And we thank you to Longview Transit and to R&amp;K for that offering. Also, remember, there's also Uber and Lyft in case you need a ride home, because we appreciate that. That's always a very important thing to, to be responsible. Upcoming events, we have Longview Symphony Orchestra at Belcher Center, December 15th at 7:00 PM. The Zip Line Through the Lights at Thomas Falls Christmas, thousands of lights and dozens of scenes now through December the 30th. Have you all ever done a zip line before?
Yes.
It's really pretty fun. I'm scared of heights, but I've done it, and it's, it's really, it's really neat. You should give it a try. It's, it's an interesting thing to do. For more information on any of these events, please check out the calendar and visit longviewtexas.com to learn more. Our Go-Giver Gala is fast upon us. It's an event honoring some Go-Givers in Longview, as well as providing proceeds to help reduce our homelessness efforts in Longview. And the response has been, all I can say is it's been overwhelming, and it's going to be an event that will make us all proud. The work that's been put forth to this point, and the work that will continue to be put forth to make this event the success that I can already tell you it's already is, is going to be something that we're going to be very thrilled about. So hope you'll, you'll take time to come and be a part of this event, help those that need help, help our community, and help those, those that will never be able to say thank you, but they'll be appreciated, and it's something that we should all do if we can have the ability to do it. So let's continue to keep that on our calendars. It's always appropriate to ask these questions, but I know the agenda, isn't it?[1286.24][1286.24](laughter) If the agreement to attract the Dollar General Distribution Center is able to be finalized, and it looks very promising because it was finalized, with us, how much is the economic impact to Longview estimated to be over the next 25 years? And look at these numbers, would you? Hundred million, 400 million, 700 million, and 1 billion. Well, 100 million, 21%. 400 million, 35%. 700 million, 23%. 1 billion, 21%. I wish it was 1 billion, but it's 700 million. Can y'all grasp your hands around that number? Because it's, it's mind-boggling to me. Divide that out over 25 years, and we're doing pretty darn good every year, girls and boys. I mean, this is really, this is really something. It's, this thing is gonna be such an economic impact for our community that I don't think we even realize what it's gonna do for us. All I know is it's the best thing we've had in a long time, and I want to thank Leadco and all those involved, Jim, your office, everybody involved. David, y'all, you all, everyone played a role in this, and so what a great thing for our community, and the impact it's gonna have. Well, all I can say is thank you. We need it. We need every bit of that. Okay. You know, y'all don't understand how this all works every week, I know. But when it's, when it's come times for a survey question, on Sunday night, I have to submit a survey question, and sometimes I just don't get around to it in time, and so I always can get, hopefully, the, the good question asked, and the funny one, I sometimes have to leave up to the discretion of those involved with making this post. And this was done without, without my knowledge, and the first time I read the question was when I answered the survey.[1397.51][1397.51](laughter) So, thank you, Julie Woods, for your survey question, ridiculing me once again this week. But for fun, last week, my wife Kelly and I dressed up as the Grinch and Cindy Lou Who for the Longview Christmas Parade, and I can just tell you this, it was a blast. Number one, the parade was such a huge success. The weather was fantastic. The kids out there were so enthusiastic. The floats were phenomenal. The participation was great. The city did a wonderful job, and I already look forward to next year, because I will do that again. We dressed up, we had such a good time. Every kid in that parade wanted to take a picture with my wife. Nobody wanted to take a picture with me, because they were scared of the Grinch.[1436.30][1436.30](laughter) But, you know, that's what it should be about, making some kids smile, letting everybody have a good time. You know, if I can't let people laugh at me, then there's something wrong, and I enjoy it, and I enjoy every minute of it. So next year, who is Buddy the Elf and Miss Elf? I don't even know who that is.
You need to know all children. Yeah.
But, yeah, I don't know who it is. But 32% want us to be that. Rudolph and Mrs. Claus, 32% want us to be that. Who is Olaf and Elsa?
Oh, man.
I've never seen the movie, so I don't know. And I'm like, what am I dressing up as, actually? I don't know who these people are. So I'm going for the other category, okay? But 27%, so it's a tie between Buddy the Elf and Rudolph. Yeah, it was good. But, you know, this was fun. It was a lot of fun, and I appreciate the people who take the time to take these surveys and have a little laugh with us. You know, there's some seriousness, there's some laughter, but that's what this season's all about, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that. Okay. Before we go into executive session, here are words that come to my mind: integrity, honesty, compassion, humility, kindness, caring, selflessness, sincerity, funny, loyal. Those epitomize you, David Willard. You're a great man, and you've served our community for 10 years, and I'm sad this is your last meeting with me, because I don't know what it'd been like to not have you here with me. I don't really look forward to that opportunity, but I look forward to being with Keith, because I know he's gonna take your place and do a great job. And, and, you know, we, we're gonna miss you, we, we wish you the best. You deserve every ounce of this retirement, because you've worked so hard for our community. And so we, as a council, have a gift for you. We didn't know what to get you, because you're kind of a hard guy to buy for, but we did hear of a couple of things that might pique your interest. And so I just want to also say, I thank the council members for being so involved. I sent out a group text this week, and I don't know if that's against the law, Jim, if that's (laughter), but I sent a group text out to every council member, okay? So open records, whatever. Because I needed some information on what can we get, Mr. Willard, on, for his retirement. And so we had some great thoughts, and I appreciate all of your all's input on helping